Councilor Cologne Hayes.
Here.
Councilor Condon.
Here.
Councilor Crowe.
Here.
Councilor Linehan.
Here.
Councilor McDonald.
Here.
Councilor O'Malley.
Here.
Councilor Seaco.
Here.
Councilor Simonelli.
Councilor Spatafora.
Yes.
Councilor Winslow. Council President Murphy.
Here.
Next order of business. Under the provisions of the open meeting law, for those in attendance, please be informed that UMA Urban Media Ads will be recording this evening's meeting, so just be aware there will be audio and video recordings of this meeting. First order of business.
No public comment tonight.
No public comments. Okay.
Paper 319-23, minutes from the meeting of September 12, 2023, and paper 320-23, minutes from the meeting of September 5, 2023.
Motion approved by Councilor Crowe, seconded by Councilor O'Malley. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? The minutes are approved. Next order of business, please.
Paper 312-23, petition, Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, and Verizon New England Inc., Plan Number 30711302 to install a new pole number 2507-84 and anchor located on Sylvan Street in accordance with the attached plans. Hearing required.
Would you please state your name and address for the racket and just tell us -- let me put the microphone -- and please tell us a little bit about the project?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. Good day to you all. My name is Rafael Carregalén. I represent the National Grid, 170 Metford Street here in Malden. This project is to install a pole that is going to be -- a guy is going to be connected with another pole in Sylvan Street. The purpose is to develop a project that is going to be -- is going to be built by the Malden Housing Authority in Sylvan Street with Kimball Street. It's going to be in total three projects, but this one is one of them.
Yes, and I have -- I haven't been to open the public comment in a minute, but just to kind of piggyback on that a little bit. I've met on-site with the representative and one of his partners. We've discussed it. We also had Principal Weldy out on Sylvan Street with us because the guide -- the pole is on the corner of Kimball and Sylvan, but there is another anchor pole and a guide wire that's going across the street. Wanted to make sure that it wouldn't interfere with snow removal for the children and also that it wouldn't interfere with any buzz, you know, pickup or drop-offs for the children. Principal Weldy was fine with it, so I am also in agreement that this petition should be approved. So we do have a public hearing that we have to go through. So unless there's any questions here, Councilor Spatafora.
Thank you, Madam President. Can I just ask the petition, what is -- I know you said it's for the housing. It's part of the Malden Housing. I know they're updating some of those facilities across the street from Roland Green, I think is the real name for that facility, right?
Yes.
So what -- can you just explain what the rationale or the reason for this is?
Yes. Actually, the project is being fit for a 50 kVA transformer that is installed in Sylvan Street, but this actual transformer that feeds that building is not enough to fit the future project that is upsizing the actual service to 400 amps, 120 to 8 volts. So in order to -- we need to install a new transformer in Kimball Street, but that pole that actually is in the corner of Kimball Street with Sylvan Street in the southeast corner is a little lean. So if we're going to be building or we're going to be installing new primary lines, we have the risk that the pole fall over the street. So in that case, to release that strength in that force, we need to install another pole with a guy that's going to be handling that pole and going to release that force.
Okay, so you need to -- it's probably a 200-amp service. You're going to update now to 40-amp service, so you're going to take it from the primary to the secondary and reduce it using the transformers on the transformers in the pole? Or is it going to be the pole?
The actual transformer is on the pole. The pole is in Sylvan Street, and we're going to be -- and actually is feeding underground by underground, by two siphons. We're going to eliminate that pole. No, we're going to eliminate that service, that siphon, and that transformer. We're going to install a new transformer in an existing pole that is in Kimball Street.
And you need the guide wire to hold up that pole now because you have a heavier load on that because of transformers?
No, we're not going to install the transformer in that -- in that pole, but we're going to use that pole to extend the primary lines because actually it's only single-phase line, and we need three-phase.
For the 40-amp service, yep.
Yes, sir. So actually, if we look, the pole is already lean. It's already leaning. So if we want to straighten it, we need also the -- it's a good idea to install that pole in that guy.
Yeah, I just -- the reason why I ask these lines of questioning is, I know this is a separate topic for this council, but this is often sometimes, and this is for National Grid, but we only have one bite of the apple when they put a pole in, right? And oftentimes, I think some sponsors come in here, and if you go down Highland Ave, and I'm not blaming National Grid, but they've installed poles that have no other purpose than putting Wi-Fi antennas up. And I'm not against the Wi-Fi, but I just don't feel like we should be adding a pole for that reason. Find another pole within a certain proximity.
Right.
So I just wanted to make sure there was not another reason to add that additional pole up here, but it seems like it's for the actual use of that upgrade of the system for that Malden Housing building, which I know they needed that refurb, so I'm all for it, especially if you're for it too as well.
Thank you, and I appreciate you questioning it further because, you know, you've been really hot on this topic and making sure that we do things right within the city and we understand what people are asking of us. So thank you for the questions. So I am going to ask you to step away from the podium just for a moment or two, if you wouldn't mind, so that you can open the public hearing. Okay. So I wish to declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition, please step forward. Once again, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition, please step forward. For the third and last time, anyone looking to speak in favor of this petition, please step forward. Seeing none and hearing none in the audience, I declare that portion of the public hearing closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the petition, please step forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the petition, please step forward. And for the third and last time, anyone -- for the third and last time, anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please step forward. Seeing none and hearing none, I declare that portion of the public hearing closed. Petition, if you would please, we don't need to call the roll on this one, right? So. Motion to approve by Council Crowe, seconded by Council Cologne Hayes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The petition has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Fifteen days ago was incredible here.
Don't, and don't, don't forget my pole on Forest Street, please.
I'm saying the mic was taped.
I already told you the, the, the pole and the work is already designed, and the people, the, the, the person that scheduled the work, the jobs, told me that it's gonna be done between four and six weeks.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just so if anyone up here would like to know what I was talking about, if any of you go down Sylvan Street and you're looking at the pole directly ahead on Forest Street up on the cemetery side, it looks like it's gonna fall over and take the whole neighborhood down. I mean, it, it seriously does. It looks like we're gonna have a blackout at some point. So I've been trying to get that, we're talking about guide wire for the Kimball Street pole. Let me tell you, that one, that one needs something. So, anyway, thank you. Okay, next order of business.
Paper 322-23, petition, livery, Shi Shang Lang, 15 Burridge Place, Malden Vehicle, one vehicle new.
Councilor Seega.
Refer to license.
On Council Seega's motion to refer to license, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Petition will be referred to license. Next order of business, please.
Paper 323-23, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the City of Malden is hereby amended by adding Title II, Chapter Point 24, Section Point 025, Public Facilities Department Employee Salary Classification Plan to reflect the following compensation levels, and with it, Paper 324-23, order that the sum of $120,000 is transferred from salary reserve to public facilities labor salaries.
Councilor Crowe to start, and then Councilor McDonald.
Motion to refer to joint planning and ordinance, I mean.
Ordinance and Finance Committee meeting?
Okay, second. A motion to refer to a joint finance and ordinance meeting by Councilor Crowe, seconded by our Chair of Finance, Councilor McDonald. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The papers are referred to the Joint Finance and Ordinance Committee.
Paper 325-23, order that the City of Malden rescinds the following amounts that have been authorized to be borrowed but which have not been borrowed and are no longer needed for the purposes for which they were initially approved.
Councilor McDonald for the paper.
Yeah, thank you. This is a paper that I'm carrying on behalf of our city treasurer, who asked us to consider these two things. The first is to clean up some previously authorized borrowing limits that we don't need anymore, and so better to not have those hanging out there. The second one is, is a shift to allow us to have greater, greater discretion over how we invest our funds, and so look forward to discussing these in the Finance Committee. Thanks to the treasurer for proposing them, you know, through me, I guess. And I'll make a motion to refer to Finance.
Okay, so I'm gonna have Council, City Clerk read the second paper, and then we'll refer them both at the same time.
Sounds good.
Paper 326-23, order that the City Council accept the provisions of MGL Chapter 203C, the Massachusetts Prudent Investor Act, and adopt the local option for allowing municipal treasurers to apply the prudent investor rule to optimize returns on trust fund monies.
So on Council McDonald's motion to refer a Paper 325-23 and 326-23 to Finance, seconded by Council Condon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Papers are referred to Finance. Next order of business, please.
We have two enrolled ordinances, 302-23, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the City of Malden, MCC 11.28.010 Municipal Storm Drainage Systems is hereby amended by striking Sections A, B, and C in their entirety and replacing it with the following.
Counsel.
Motion ordained.
Motion ordained. Seconded by, Council Winslow is not here, so I need to, Council Seega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Oh, actually, we had some lights.
Roll.
Nope, okay, we didn't. Okay, we're good.
Do you want to do a roll call?
Yes, roll call, please. Sorry, thank you. Thank you.
So this is a motion to.
This is.
Ordained by Crowe.
302-23.
Council Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Council Condon. Council Crowe.
Yes.
Council Linehan.
Yes.
Council McDonald.
Yes.
Council O'Malley.
No.
Council Seega.
Yes.
Council Simonelli. Council Spatafora?
Yes.
Council Winslow? Council Winslow's not here. Council President Murphy?
Yes. Okay. Okay, that ordinance is ordained. Next order of business.
Paper 303-23, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the City of Malden, MCC 11.28.020 Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance Regulations is hereby amended by striking it in its entirety and placing it with the following.
Motion to ordain.
And Council Crowe's motion to ordain, seconded by, anybody?
Second.
Council Seega. Clerk will call the roll.
Council Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Council Condon.
Yes.
Council Crowe.
Yes.
Council Linehan.
Yes.
Council McDonald.
Yes.
Council O'Malley.
No.
Council Seega.
Yes.
Council Simonelli.
Yes.
Council Spatafora.
Yes.
Council President Murphy?
Yes. Paper is ordained. Next order of business, please. Want to read all three of these together?
I will.
Okay.
Paper 280, these are communications from the Planning Board. Paper 286-23, Communication, Planning Board Regarding Paper 197-23, Amendment of Title 12.08.020 to Change Zoning Districts of Four Parcels From Highway Business to Neighborhood Business. Paper 287-23, Communication, Planning Board Regarding Paper 198-23, Amendment of Title 12.12.030 Use Regulations for Self-Storage Facilities to Prohibit in Industrial 1 and 2 Zoning Districts. Paper 288-23, Communication, Planning Board Regarding Paper 227-23, Amendment of Title 12.12.030 and 12.12.150 Use Regulations for Drive-Thrus to Prohibit in Neighborhood Business and Central Business Zoning Districts.
Council Crowe for the papers. Oh, there you go.
The communication, we place them on file?
Second.
Motion to place on file.
On Council Crowe's motion to place on, the three papers on file, seconded by Council Seega. We don't need a roll call. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Papers have been placed on file. Next order of business.
Committee report, Paper 1, I'm sorry, Paper 327-23, the Standing Committee on License to whom was referred Papers 294, 295, 296, 297, 298, 299, 300, and 301 Series of 2023. Having considered the same, make the following report. Committee recommends these papers out favorably to the full council.
Council Seega for the committee.
Motion to receive the committee report?
On Council Seega's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Committee report has been received. Council Seega for the paper.
Okay.
Petitions, rather.
I, I would ask you to read them all together, but Council Hayes has to recuse herself from, uh, 298, 299. So I'll entertain a motion for that, right? Before we do that.
So we have a motion to recuse Council Cologne Hayes from who?
Um.
Who's gonna make the motion?
Metro House, Metro North Housing.
Are you making the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Seconded by Council Crowe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Council Cologne Hayes, you are accused from this discussion. Okay.
Okay.
Council Seega.
Are we gonna read them all before we discuss them? Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Paper 294-23, petition, Exterior Vending Machine Water Stores Incorporated, 159 Highland Avenue, new. Paper 295-23, petition, livery A, Nadif, One Nealon Street, Malden, one vehicle, new. Paper 296-23, petition, livery FNU, Sukri Sing, 99 Florence Street, Apartment 224, Malden, one vehicle, new. Paper 297-23, petition, Lodging House Cedar, Cedar House LLC, 116-118 Cedar Street, Malden, 14 units, renewal. Paper 298-23, petition, Lodging House, Metro North Housing Corp., 22 Charles Street, Malden, 11 units, renewal. Paper 299-23, petition, Lodging House, Metro North Housing Corp., 115 Washington Street, Malden, 14 units, renewal. Paper 300-23, petition, outdoor parking, 3C Realty Trust, 54 Winter Street, Malden, 22 spaces, renewal. Paper 301-23, petition, pool tables, AOH Division 12, 259 Charles Street, Malden, one table, renewal.
Thank you. So the License Committee met last week. All but three of these renewals and the, the three that are new, compliance went by to all the locations and checked everything out, and then all three of them are good to go. So I have a motion to grant these petitions.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Council McDonald. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The petitions have been granted. Next order of business, please. Oh, yes, we need, yes, we need Council Cologne Hayes, please. Thank you, Council Crowe.
Paper 328-23, Committee Report, the Standing Committee on Rules and Ordinance to whom was referred Paper 198 Series of 2023. Having considered the same, make the following report. Committee recommends to not accept the Planning Board recommendation of disapproval and further recommends this paper out favorably to the full council.
Councilor Crowe.
Motion to receive the committee report.
On Council Crowe's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Committee report has been received. Council Crowe for the paper. Yes, please.
Paper 198-23, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the City of Malden 12-12.12.030 Use Regulations is hereby amended to prohibit any new self-storage facilities by striking SP under both Industrial 1 and Industrial 2 and inserting "no" in their places.
Council Crowe for the paper.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just give you a sort of a quick background. So on July 17, the Planning Board and Ordinance Committee had a joint meeting to hear this paper. So the paper would essentially ban self-storage units in the city, self-storage facilities in the city. Currently, they're only allowed in Industrial 1 and Industrial 2 and allowed by special permit. The Planning Board voted seven to two to recommend disapproval of this paper, meaning that they will still be allowed in Industrial 1, Industrial 2 by special permit. So the Ordinance Committee met last week, and we had some discussion about ways we may be able to compromise, but that would really constitute a new paper. We currently have nine self-storage facilities in the city, and the sponsors believe really that's not the highest and best use, and we have plenty for a five-square-mile community. Council Seega had pointed out that often there is up to a year's wait to get, you know, a space in one of these, and so there was, there was quite a need, as well as we're building housing units, there is a need. However, the paper was voted out four to one, that we vote this paper out favorably and not take the recommendation of the Planning Board.
So I don't know if this is. Have any, Council Winslow? And then, okay, Council Winslow.
Yeah, I know we have nine, and I, I don't know if that includes the one that's already under construction on the Eastern Avenue, but I, I know, particularly in Ward 6, you know, we do have the industrial strip that runs, you know, south of the bike trail, and, you know, that storage unit that's going up in Ward 6 is gone. There's one gone up in Ward 5. So, and we have plenty of others down, like by, in Broadway Plaza. You know, I think it is, it's certainly, you know, I, I mean, I, I just think that we have ones under construction. I think we really need to take any pause right now to not have more as we talk about maybe some rezoning those industrial areas so they're more appropriate uses that complement the trail. So I, it's just, it's artifact of that. I mean, I know and Council Crowe was concerned that if we just limited it to like Industrial 1, that that would put everything down by the river, which is inconsistent there. So I think it's, you know, the point of this is that we have one under construction. We've had new ones come up. We really want to take a pause and really look at these areas that, the Malden River and along the trail, to not just have these come in by right almost. So, so that's really what, you know, the purpose of this is, and so that we can evaluate that and, you know, maybe we can revisit that after we've looked at some of the zoning in those areas. But just to, you know, I look at a lot of comments, like what, another storage unit. I think the community, you know, senses this, there's enough at this point. Let's pause it and let's evaluate what we want in these industrial areas that were meant to be railroad-served and aren't served by railroad and really, really figure out what we want there before it just becomes all storage units. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Winslow. Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I'm gonna echo my colleagues' sentiments as well. I think that we should really be taking a pause at this moment. If we have nine, you know, I know there's a need, you know, but, you know, let's see how great the need is and see how long-lasting it is. I don't think it hurts us by taking a step back, pause, and taking a look. We could always, we could always revisit it and, and allow them if, if, if there's that much of a need and, you know, people are calling me up on the phone and banging down my door telling me that they need storage. But right now, I got them banging on my door, asking for housing. People need more housing. So, you know, we should be taking a look at some of those sites to see if they're buildable sites to maybe create, create some more housing. And I know we're all doing as much as we can in our districts to, to try and do that. But, you know, I just, you know, it's like warehouse space to me. It's, you know, it really doesn't serve any purpose. You know, you're lucky if you get one or two people operating that big facility, so it's not bringing in jobs. They're probably getting taxed the warehouse rate type of tax, if that's, I don't even know, but I, I, I'm sure they're not getting taxed as much if it was living space or regular retail. So, you know, I, I think it's a good idea to take a little step back. I think this is a positive thing for the city. Almost kind of put it like a moratorium type of thing on storage facilities, because they're just popping up everywhere. And before they're there, then trying to, trying to get rid of them is like impossible. You can't do it because they are such a lucrative business. So once you get them, you're kind of stuck with them. And I know that on my car, Route 60 anyway, and I know that Council Winslow and I have talked, and I know that I've talked to you, Council President, because it goes through your neighborhood too and yours, Council Crowe. So that stretch of Route 60, I don't know if that's what we want to see is, you know, storage containment units being, popping up in between like a beautiful building and created for housing. That's all. So.
Thank you, Council Simonelli. Council O'Malley.
I just wanted to thank the Ordinance Committee for, for doing this work. I know it's a lot to kind of, you know, dive through it all. You know, for me, I'll just echo the, the sentiments, you know. How many jobs are these creating? They're maybe creating like one or two jobs. Council Simonelli and I have been trying to get ahold of the management of one of the companies and to try to create like a dog park in the area, and it's just been really difficult even just getting ahold of anyone at the, at the company. So for us, and for me, I just, I would rather see a, a business that's adding more to our community, really enriching it, and at least the bare minimum, providing, providing good jobs for our, for our residents. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council O'Malley. Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you. I, I also wanted to just say, I, I don't like voting against the, what the Planning Board recommendation. I just wanted to say that they did a great job and, and they're looking out for our residents. But I do believe also to take a pause here. There is a need for storage areas, no doubt. People are trying to downsize and have smaller, so I do understand that. But I think if we do some long-term planning and figure this out, taking a pause is probably our best idea. But I'm glad it's not saying that we're gonna like ban them all together. I think taking a pause and looking to the future is, is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Cologne Hayes. Council Seega.
Thank you, Council President. I think I am on the minority here. I, I understand that we have too many. I just think that the, the way the process is going right now, where they go in front of the Planning Board for a special permit, I think that it should be staying that way. I don't necessarily think that we should be banning them all together out of the city because I believe that although some counselors seem to think we need more housing, which we're going to need to build more housing, more housing requires more storage because the housing that we're going to be building does not give our residents enough storage. So somebody will have to go out of the city to potentially grab their summer clothes for their kids or their winter clothes for their kids or their Christmas decorations. So while I'm not necessarily, I, I don't like looking at them personally either, but it's, it's a thing that our residents, it's a service our residents are going to need if we, especially if we keep building more housing. So I am going to be voting against this paper this evening. I think that we should be. I think that we should be leaving it as is and leaving it under the discretion of the Planning Board and, you know, maybe we need a better way to notify people that, you know, I didn't know the one on Route 60 that's currently being built was going to be a storage facility until they actually tore the building down and it was going to be a storage facility. So maybe, you know, we have to, we have to notify people a little bit better and then maybe the Planning Board's process will work properly because nobody went there and spoke against it because I'm a city councilor and I didn't know that it was going to be a storage facility. So how would the residents know if somebody who's involved, such as myself, didn't know? So I, I think that it should stay. I don't think we should completely ban them, especially we're, we're a community that already has a lot of housing and, you know, the last few months, all I hear is we need more commercial real estate, we need more commercial real estate and we just keep turning down commercial, commercial businesses that are trying to come and open in this city. So that is, I will be voting no on this paper. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Sika, Counselor O'Malley for the second time.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to acknowledge a good point that was made by Counselor Sika. I do think that, I've been to other communities, I think it was actually Lawrence, where if there's going to be a public hearing on a special permit or some other thing, they have a requirement that not only do you need to post it in the newspaper, you also need to post a sign outside of the establishment or the property that that's gonna happen in and that could maybe help get the word out. So maybe that's an ordinance that we should pass. I think that's a great point. And then your other point that you made about storage for residents, every apartment that I've ever lived in and maybe I was lucky, has usually had an included storage unit in the facility, in the building itself. And I'm wondering if maybe what we need to do is look at our ordinances here that say, when you're building housing here, you also need to make sure that each unit has some type of storage facility on site so that, because the thing is, so many, it's not a guarantee that these storage units are even being used by Malden residents. I mean, we could easily be, be priced out by, you know, Melrose and other, and other people who are in the area just because we're near the airport. And it's like, oh, I'll store my stuff, you know, on the way to the airport or something like that. So I appreciate this dialogue. I think that probably some tweaks to our zoning ordinance requiring onsite storage is probably a good idea and also just looking at our general ordinance about how do we post and get out the news about hearings. So I think that this is gonna result in a, in a good dialogue and a good work and some actions that we can take forward and maybe even complete by the end of the year. Thank you.
Counselor Winslow for the second time.
Yeah, no, I'm, you know, I, 10 years before ago, when I wasn't even on the council, I started to work with Michelle Romero on some zoning related to this area and it didn't go anywhere. And I do specifically, you know, I did reach out in Ward 6 to spread the word here and I just didn't get, I just, but I constantly hear people who go down the trail say, another storage, so I'm just, I think it is sometimes we just have to listen to the broader folks. To expect people to come out to a special meeting at an odd hour and that type of thing, I, I just, I feel that the community sentiment is there to take a pause here. So I say, I'm not, I understand that, you know, I, I think we have sufficient, we have one under construction and I think it'd be good to take a pause so we can focus on what we want and, and, you know, that's what I would like to be proactive. I took that effort. I know we have, I, I'm gonna reach, I am reaching out to, you know, Debbie Burke of her Strategic Planning Office so we can start getting technical assistance to look at being proactive. But I just feel like to expect us to always have the residents react to things, I think it's, we really need to start doing a master plan. We need to, you know, we just saw Mayor Wu say after, you know, 50 years that Boston's gonna tackle their zoning or ours is 40 years old. So maybe we need to be more proactive and really think of this. And so that's really, this is, like I say, a Band-Aid. Not adverse, but I, I just tired of not doing anything proactively and I just don't want to see more storage units. I want us to focus on what we want, but that means we gotta step up as a council to start working towards that. Thank you.
Counselor, that was Counselor Simonelli again.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, you know, I, you know, I think that we, I think we should just kind of like, just take a step back. I do, the things that Counselor Sika's saying, you know, are true, that, you know, we could do better at several different things, same with, you know, with the Planning Board. But right now this just, you know, allows us, gives us time to tweak these things that are actually coming up tonight and will probably be coming up in the future. We don't like everybody making a last-ditch effort to, you know, any developer that's thinking of putting a storage facility down here. Now that they see that we're talking about it, we're gonna start debating on whether or not, we don't want them just strolling in paperwork, paperwork, then all of a sudden their grandfathered it, so we started out with nine, we end with 11 before we end up, you know, getting this locked in. Excuse me. And I, and I think that, you know, all these papers that we work on all the time, we just did it last Tuesday when this place was as packed here that I haven't seen since the close of the Malden Hospital with the crowd that was here. And again, you know, these are working papers. Let's, let's try some of these things out. If that don't work, we try something else. You know, we can, we always have the opportunity to go back, take that work and paper and try and tweak it in a way that makes more sense for our constituents. And, and everybody's happy about it, I think. Well, I shouldn't say everybody's happy, but people are a little bit more pleasant. They feel a little happy that, you know, maybe some of their stuff got in. So again, this is just a paper that, you know, I think that there's no harm. We've got nine of them right now, you know, a couple of them are under construction and, you know, we can hold off, we can hold off for a good year. I don't think we're sending out any kind of message to anybody. And I gotta be honest too, I don't really hear, you know, people calling me up saying, you know, geez, you know, Chris, I've been everywhere and I can't find a storage facility that'll take my bedspreads. I, I haven't heard it. The only thing, you know, that I hear, like I said, and I get phone calls, is people looking for places to live. And I know that, you know, you know, you can't take away and add to some of it, meaning that, you know, we can't build, probably build housing on some of these locations, but we don't have to settle for just storage containment places, especially at this stage in the game. So I, I think by us taking a backseat a little bit, taking a good hard look on what's working, what's not working for us here in the city when it comes to businesses like that, and then go from there. Thank you, Counsel President.
Thank you. Okay, from this chair, I actually have a question to the sponsors, actually two questions. One is, have, we keep saying taking a pause and to me, just personally, taking a pause isn't changing an ordinance. Taking a pause is having a moratorium to do further investigation as to how it has long-term impact on the community. You know, one of the things that just keeps coming to my mind is most of the people who need a storage unit beside businesses who use it, you know, our families, I know my son is in a two-bedroom apartment with kids, they have two storage units because there's just so much stuff that they need off-site to be able to kind of recycle seasonal. And are we gonna price, a lot of people in apartments can't afford to buy a house, they don't have the money. I mean, some obviously rent very expensive apartments in Malden, but I think the type of person who probably uses a storage unit maybe is on a limited budget. And are we gonna kind of price them out of the ability to get a storage unit? So that's, you know, one thing that's running through my mind. But the other thing is, why didn't we, changing an ordinance requires, as we know, you know, a significant number of votes and to undo it will require that same number of votes to undo it. And we have the Planning Board, who I also don't like going against, you know, voting seven to two not to do this. So was there a rationale as to why we just didn't do a 12-month moratorium like we've done on other topics? In that way, it's not changing the zoning, but we've got the moratorium, we can go work with OSPCD to find out more information and then come back to the table to change the ordinance if necessary? I don't know if anyone, anyone wants to tackle that question?
Think that could be done in a year? Does that, does that put us in a box though, find out solutions or?
Well, Counsel, I, I do have Counselor Hayes first, Counsel Cologne Hayes. Counselor O'Malley said he was one of the sponsors. Would you mind if I let him speak first? Counselor O'Malley.
Yes, so we definitely could change the zoning back. I, I think, I think for us is that the, a 12-month moratorium, I don't think is really gonna be the type of break that we need from this. I think that probably what would be more effective is like a, like a five-year break from this. And I don't think state law allows moratoriums to really go longer than a year or so. I mean, I remember we got into some weird things with the, with the last moratorium we had where I think we were kind of pushing the envelope because we had to do like a formal study. We paid like close to like $100,000 to do like a formal housing production plan study, if I remember correctly. It was, it was quite entailed to prove and justify a moratorium, whereas, you know, I, I think that we, we probably need at least a five-year break from this. And we've had so many of them built over the last like 10 years that like, I think that would be sufficient. And if for some reason we'd end up needing them, and we could always change it back, but personally, the ordinance change that I would prefer to make would be to move forward with this, but actually require onsite storage. So that if you're going to build a, you know, apartment building with 20 units, you provide 20 storage units so that they can store it onsite. You know, that only makes sense to me because you're having it all in one place versus having it off-site for, for no particular reason except for the fact that people can charge you an arm and a leg and once you have your stuff in there, it's too hard to get out because no one likes to move anything and the prices just keep going up and up and up, which I think is what Counsel Spatafor said when we first talked about this. So that was the reasoning for me. I view it as a longer-term break than, than just like a one-year moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Hayes, one second. Counsel Linehan, I'll come back to you, okay?
That's fine, yeah.
Thank you. Counsel Cologne Hayes.
So, thank you for that question, actually. I was thinking the same thing. My counselor to the left just said, it's not a pause. And I'm like, oh, okay, because we all were saying pause. And so that, I questioning that as well because as a renter, I rented for many years before I came here. I don't know who we're affecting in our community. I know that I couldn't afford to, at the time I was renting, I couldn't afford to pay for storage either. So I'm not really sure who this is affecting, maybe more higher-end. So that is a question, but if the, if a moratorium was one year, I agree, that's not enough time. I don't know if we could do a five-year moratorium, but it's, now I'm kind of on, on the edge here about how I'm gonna go with this, but I do think that it's good that we plan and maybe take a look at where we're putting them. So I think that's good too, but it's, thank you for asking that because I was a little confused about the pause as well.
Thank you, Counsel Cologne Hayes. Counselor, where can we find you? Counselor Linehan.
Thank you.
Don't, hold on, I'm gonna have to go. Let me get, let me get you this way.
Thank you, Madam President. I wasn't gonna speak on this, but I, you know, I thought we might have moved through it a little bit faster, but since I am a sponsor, I wanted to just kind of share where I'm coming from. I definitely hear the concern, particularly with housing prices the way they are, folks may not have the ability to move into a larger unit or somewhere where they have storage. I also, you know, very much experienced having availability of storage everywhere that I had rented, but that may not be the norm anymore. I don't know. I've, I've owned my home for over 10 years, so I don't know much about the rental market at all. And I definitely don't wanna, you know, tie anyone's hands behind their back, but on, on the same token, we don't, as a city, I think, have a responsibility to provide unlimited storage for the world. And I think that we are making a choice through our zoning of what we want to proactively attract. I think we probably have so many because the ones, you know, from what I hear anecdotally from my friends who utilize them, the ones in Cambridge, Somerville, Medford are just getting more and more expensive. And so there is certainly a demand for it, but I'm just not sure that it's our role as a city to meet that demand in an unlimited nature. I mean, they're obviously making money as a business model, just even light research looking online that, you know, coverage of sort of why these are a moneymaker, like they make money because there's a demand. And I think that we have certainly done our part as a city. I think that, you know, as Counselor O'Malley said, a moratorium, even if it were allowed, I don't know if we'd have enough time to properly study that. And just speaking personally, I don't think there's much that could change my mind. If we have nine or potentially 10, if the one in Counselor Winslow's ward isn't being counted because it's not done yet, we're a very small, dense city and every choice that we make to do with a parcel is something, we're not making another choice with it. So if we say yes to storage, we're not just saying no to housing, we're staying no, we're saying no to, you know, artist studio space and other light industrial or commercial uses. I think the biggest issue facing our city right now is shoring up our tax base. And I, I don't know, but I suspect that this is not necessarily the highest-earning use for some of these properties. And like Counselor Simonelli, by far, I've never once gotten a call looking for help finding storage, but I get a call almost every day looking for some type of housing help. So I think that planning proactively is the direction that we should be moving in. I will be supporting this. I do think that we need to just say enough is enough on these. There are better uses that we can find for most of these parcels. And I think, yeah, a lot of them are really hard to undo. I don't think they're easy to redevelop as time goes on. So we're probably stuck with the ones we have and need to think about how we can bring in more tax revenue and, you know, think proactively about our zoning and what we want the city to look like moving forward.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. Counselor, Counsel Spatafor, did I see your light on?
Counselor McDonald. You know, like Counsel Linehan, I wasn't necessarily planning to speak, but I just wanna emphasize one point that you made, Counsel Linehan, which is that the, like not choosing to make a decision about this is itself making a decision. Right now, I think the situation that we have is we know that we need to build our commercial tax base and we need to, we have, we have a densely populated city, so every parcel counts. And what's happening right now is that through some combination of what's up in the commercial real estate market, what's easy to get built and the way that our permitting and our zoning is working, that's very attractive to storage facilities. So I actually think this is urgent. They are large parcels. And as somebody said earlier, like once these businesses go down, they are very difficult to dislodge. So, I mean, I actually do think this is urgent and that this is the most, this is the most efficient and effective way to be able to make sure that we're not losing out on key parcels. That one on Eastern Avenue is really sad to me. I mean, you think about how we could, the, the range of uses that could have gone in that, like that excellent spot and I, and I try not to cry about it. But the, the reality is like, it'll take, it will take us some time to do the zoning. I, I personally am very willing to revisit this conversation as part of a comprehensive zoning package and that would give us some time to advocate for that. I recognize that's a high threshold, but if we're talking about comprehensive zoning packages, we're trying to get to eight votes as it is. So I think we have to, if, if there's real demand there, then, then that is part of the case. I just wanna say, like while we were talking, I went online and I was able to find a storage unit in Malden. So I don't, I don't actually think we know what the capacity is. Nine to 10 seems like a lot. And for me, the issue is the urgency of making sure that we are, you know, closing the door on this, which is different than a pause, it is closing the door. And I think we're all able and willing to revisit that in the future as part of a comprehensive package, but if we don't do that, I really fear I'm gonna, you know, wake up in two more months and there's gonna be another prime parcel gone to a storage facility serving residents of Somerville.
Right.
Counselor O'Malley. Counsel Spatafor has not spoken yet, so I'm gonna let him speak and then you for the third and last line.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm gonna, I wasn't gonna speak either, but Counselor McDonald, when he said he was gonna cry, I had to step in and.
I didn't, I held it together.
A couple, couple things is, Counsel O'Malley's point about that, that sign, it's something I think I actually shared a while ago. Medford does it too, I think, not for everything, but for demolition. And it's, it's a four-by-eight sheet, you have to, it's pretty big, it's almost, you can't miss it. I think it's something we should definitely do because I think that seems to work better than mail and email because if done properly, it definitely catches the motorists driving by. I'm sure the neighbors would know if the building was coming down, but that sheet. So I wanna definitely think that's a great idea. The other thing is, you know, I hate going against the Planning Board. I think they do a thorough job. I also, to Counsel Sika's point, I hate, first of all, I, I, I don't know if there's too many things we have outlawed in terms of use. I mean, we've been very selective, but it's, 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 it's a broad brush stroke, but I do agree that there is a lot of them. And one of my proposals at the ordinance meeting I was gonna make, but I think the votes were there anyways, was to, you know, if we didn't get the votes, which it sounds like we did, it was dimensional controls. You know, just, you heard them in the pocketbook, meaning they can take a piece of property like the one in Eastern Ave, they could build six stories and probably put 500 units and like the one in Eastern Ave, they could build six stories and probably put 500 units, and it's, it's, it makes their numbers work. You, you bring on those dimensional controls, no more than one story, they'll never use it for, uh, storage, because we don't have the, the landspan to do it that way. So there's another way to kind of slice that onion. I don't think we're gonna go there based on the discussion here, but that's another way we can do it. Uh, the reason why I didn't wanna speak is, you know, I, I think it's very important, because it's been said, every piece of property that has the opportunity to be redeveloped, I know we always talk about residential, but we should be focusing on mixed-use, best-use, commercial-industrial tax base, because we are, if you look at the numbers, and you've heard Mr. Hogan talk about it with the school spending and everything like that, it comes back to the tax burden, and the residents is gonna shift pretty quickly if we keep on decimating that. So a broader discussion is certainly, this will go forward, but I think this council should come together next year. Uh, and we've all said it in some way, shape or form, but we need money to do it, is to do a, a full rezoning planning process. We have to hire an outside company to come in and spend a year, and you focus on, what Councillor Winslow said, is some of the bike path, maybe even the river, to do that, and, and, and I think this is maybe the impetus to do it, but it's important we continue to focus on redeveloping, but I, I don't wanna get lost in the fact that we need that commercial and industrial space. I mean, Everett got the casino, but if you dig into Everett's numbers, you know, I know they're getting rid of that power plant, but that is a huge amount of taxes, and they're building a lot of housing, too. But they have a pretty good mix of industrial and, and, and commercial, same thing with Saugus. The residential tax rate is very low and reasonable there, because they have all over one. Now, we don't have that, but I think we gotta be very, very deliberate, and when we're rezoning those areas on the bike path and on the river, put up a five-story hotel on the river, because that's, you know, you, you have no butters that are gonna bother you. Rezone it in a way that's mixed-use. So I always say that because I think it, it kind of connects all these dots, uh, and we're going into New Year, we should come together and, and look to find some funding to do that, that planning and rezoning, because we have had enough trouble doing our own rules, our own charter, that is a monumental task, and that's something that comes with, on a part-time Tuesday, so I just wanted to mention it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councillor Spatafor. Councillor O'Malley for the last time.
Yeah, and it's more, it's more just for, um, parliamentary procedure. So any, anyone who's on the fence, because the planning board rec, did not recommend this, if we move to, or to approve this, and for some reason, it needs eight votes, and for some reason that fails, we would be barred from doing this for two years. So it would be the opposite of taking a break, it would be, we would be barred from taking a break. Um, so that, just, if anyone's on the fence, just know that we need to get to eight votes. If we don't get to eight votes, then we can't do it for two years. So I would hope that anyone on the fence would support this, I will be supporting it, and definitely can commit to working to changing those underlying zonings that ideally would put the storage use on the sites that actually have the housing. I think that's, that's the, probably the, I think, the best way to, to resolve it, knowing that we do have a pretty saturated market when it comes to the existing large-format off-site storage. Thank you.
Councillor Spatafor for the second.
Do we know if there's any, that would be, is there anything in the pipeline that would be affected by this?
No.
Okay. Because it wouldn't be covered, based on, I think, the time, right? There's none in the pipeline, right? I think Michelle would have told us.
Even if they were.
Okay, I was, I was just wondering, that's all. All right. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other lights. Motion to...
No, wait, wait, before I make motion to enroll, I did, as Councillor O'Malley had mentioned about building, like, onsite storage, you know, it, that sounds great in theory, but as we see, actually, it doesn't mean that actually the residents get that as a part of their, you know, their rent. As we see that with, with parking, I hear that all the time, they build the parking, and then they say, "They're gonna charge me another $250 to park in my building, so I park on the street." Do you mean, it, it, yeah, it doesn't mean that it's included in, in, in someone's rent. They, if they want storage, they have to pay an extra $100, or an extra $200, whatever the, the thing was. So just making sure that they are required to build the storage doesn't mean that they allow the residents for free. You mean, as a part of, as a part of their rent. Like I said, I see it with, um, with parking, and then they come back and say, "We don't, we only, you know, have 40% of our lot filled," because they're charging so much that people park it on the street, unless there's residential parking. But, so it's something, food for thought when you were thinking about what we're gonna require someone to do, and then you're kind of holding their feet to the fire, and then their residents as well, without other options. But, so I make a motion to enroll.
So we have a motion to enroll by Councillor Crowe, seconded by Councillor O'Malley. The clerk will call the roll, please. Councillor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Councillor Condon.
Yes.
Councillor Crowe.
Yes.
Councillor Linehan.
Yes.
Councillor McDonald.
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley.
Yes.
Councillor Seeger.
No.
Councillor Seminelli.
Yes.
Councillor Spatafor.
Yes.
Councillor Winslow.
Yes.
Councillor President Murphy.
Yes.
Okay. That is enrolled, 10, 2, 1. Next order of business. The docket is clear. Personal privilege for Councillor Winslow, you're fast on the button there for personal privilege.
Okay, yeah, um, well, I do, I didn't get a chance to talk about Maplewood Fest, so that is happening September 30th. Cross the fingers, we will, we'll, I think we're gonna go sort of rain or shine, I think it's, uh, if anything, it's like showers, but, um...
Councillors, could we please give Councillor Winslow the flow?
Okay. So, so that's Saturday, September 30th, 12 to 4, down in Maplewood Square. We have several bands, demonstrations, street performers, vendors, a lot, civic groups, so it should be fun. We had a lot of fun last year, I'm looking forward to having fun again, so come on down, enjoy Maplewood Fest, thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Winslow. Councillor Linehan.
Thank you, Madam President. Just one more reminder that tomorrow night, we are having our community meeting about the Malden Hospital demolition. It's tomorrow from 6 to 8 p.m., yeah, at BB School. Uma is recording it, we are not live streaming and taking live participation, but you can email questions ahead of time to myself, or I think it's community@toughsmedicine.org, or alinehan@cityofmalden.org. So again, 6 to 8 p.m. tomorrow at BB, hope to see everyone there. If you can't make it, feel free to reach out, and I'm happy to talk to anybody afterwards.
Thank you, Councillor Linehan. Councillor McDonald.
I wanted to remind folks that next Tuesday, the 26th, we'll be having our Malden Community Climate Workshop, that's from 4 to 7 p.m. at the Teen and Senior Center, and it's like a drop-in thing, so you can come by, there'll be some food, there is childcare if you email our senior planner, Andrew McCula, in advance. We will also have some interpreters on site, and, although I realize that I'm saying this in English, and, uh, the goal really is to show some of the possible recommendations we might have as, as part of a climate action plan. So it's kind of taking those out, get some first community feedback, um, it's a great thing to stop by, you know, if you've got kids, there's some art projects as well. So hope everybody will come out and check that out, uh, next Tuesday, and then we will schedule the Joint Ordinance Finance Committee meeting, not too early, you know, so I can be there as much as I can. Uh, and I just wanted to wish my spouse, parent of my children, and my co, you know, co-owner of our house, uh, yes, very happy birthday on Thursday. Happy birthday, Sarah.
Councillor O'Malley. Councillor O'Malley?
Thank you very much. So also on September 30th, which is Saturday, from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m., the Ward for Association and myself will be doing a tree planting at Quatermley Park. Uh, we're gonna be planting over a dozen shade trees, uh, we're gonna be finishing up as quickly as possible so we can get over to Maplewood Fest. And the tree warden, Chris Rosa, is gonna be doing a tree planting tutorial, so I hope we all see you there, it's fun, and definitely check out what it's like. We will pre-dig the holes, so you don't have to worry, we're not gonna be, no one's gonna be breaking their back digging holes, um, but if you wanna learn how to plant a tree and participate in Malden's future, please come on down to Quatermley Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor O'Malley. Councillor, oops. Councillor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you. Happy birthday, Sarah, and I, happy birthday, Carrie, because they share a birthday, which is pretty amazing, but, they do, pretty, yeah. So, anyway, to, it is National Hispanic Heritage Month, it started September 15th, it goes to October 15th, and I have been putting things on my Facebook page honoring Hispanic Americans who have been making a difference, and you will be seeing some from our youth, they have gotten involved, and so the next few posts will be from our youth that graduated Malden High School, and they're choosing their, from their country that they're from, and we're gonna be highlighting people from their country, and, so check that out. But we're also going to be at the Maplewood Fest, uh, the Hispanic, the North Shore Hispanic Association will have a table, and we're also having our festival right here at City Hall in combination with the city, it's going to be October 7th, Saturday, from 12 to 4. There is, uh, the River, Malden River Fest is having a blessing of the river before that, so I'm going to go to that and then head over, and, uh, there're gonna be some nice music and dancing and food, and it's all right here in, um, City Hall Plaza or the Ed Lucy Plaza, so hope to see you there. Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Cologne Hayes. Councillor Spatafor.
Well, since we're wishing happy birthdays coming up, Councillor Seeger's birthday is actually Sunday, correct? I make sure I get that right, and it's also my wife's birthday, so happy birthday to my wife Debbie, and then happy birthday, Councillor Seeger. You're welcome.
I didn't ask who you had a birthday.
Okay. Seeing no other lights, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn by Councillor Crowe, seconded by Councillor Cologne Hayes.
Are you a Libra?
All in favor? I oppose, nay?
Yeah, but she's a Libra.
58 minutes.